So for our fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, what we do and we consider is we look at the vision and the mission for the city of Lancaster. Our city council annually gathers together and establishes a strategic plan. As a portion of that strategic plan, they identify the mission and the vision for the community. And our vision has remained the same to ensure that Lancaster continues to be a thriving and diverse community, so that we are protecting our assets and that we remain the shining star of Texas. Our mission is to ensure that we remain financially sustainable. We have a lot of growth taking place, however, if we don't grow smart and we're not doing this in a sustainable manner, it is not beneficial for our community. And our council has made sure that the implementation of our vision and our values is such that the city can remain a viable community well into the future. Our goals, as the city has established them, are a financially sound city government, ensuring that we have sound infrastructure, quality development, healthy, safe, and engaged community, as well as a professionally committed workforce. And that is what you have here this evening, is the opportunity to engage with that workforce and how they deliver the services that are available in our community. For the fiscal year 2018-2019, this is our city at a glance, kind of an overview of our community. The North Central Texas Council of Governments, every year establishes an estimated population, and it starts with the census. Our current population for 2018 is estimated at approximately 37,880 individuals. We're a little over 33 square miles. We maintain and operate 16 facilities. We own half of the 579 park acres, 16 parks. The city maintains and has control of 215 miles of roadway, 193 miles of water lines, and 205 miles of sewer lines. And then you see there on this screen are required city services. Many of those you see around the room, the 24-hour emergency communications, our police department, fire protection, emergency medical services, as well as co-compliance, animal services, building maintenance, and parks are primary services. When you look at the growth and what the city has experienced, this has been our population growth since the last census in 2010. Our population at the census was 36,361. And again, you can see the growth that we have experienced in just this short eight-year period of time, progressing to over 37,880. The US Department also does a estimated population. Right now, they're tracking that our census is roughly about 39,000. But because that isn't going to be official until they continue and do the official 2020 census, they estimate that population based on a formula, looking at the number or the average number of individuals that reside in a single-family residential dwelling, which is about 2.5 for every single-family residential dwelling. Our population is wrong, and so is our budget. And you can look at this slide here, which shows you a citywide budget growth and how the budget has grown and how our expenditures, as well as our revenues, have increased slightly as we've continued to grow as an organization and as a community. And we're proposing with the FY 2018-2019 budget that will have revenues in excess of $61 million, with expenditures citywide with all funds, all departments, at about $58 million. This slide demonstrates the total funds and all the funds that are available. The general government makes up your general fund. You also have your special revenue funds, which includes our hotel motel, emergency 911 communications, stormwater, and debt service. We have proprietary funds, and those are the funds that the revenues that are generated from the service provision go right back into the maintenance and operation. Those include our water and wastewater fund, our airport fund, and so forth. And then we have component units, the residents of Lancaster approved utilization of sales tax. So a quarter cent of our sales tax goes to fund the Lancaster Economic Development Corporation, and a half cent of our sales tax goes to fund the recreational development corporation. The remaining 1% goes into general fund, and .25 cents, or a quarter, the remaining quarter cent, goes into property tax reduction. So when you receive your property tax bill, you'll notice on your bill, it actually says that if the city of Lancaster did not use sales tax, your property tax bill would have been. That goes in to support and offset the cost of services in our general fund as well. The remaining 6% of the sales tax goes back to the state of Texas. When we're developing the budget, we look at key factors such as our economy, estimated and projected revenues, the priorities that are established by the city council through strategic planning, infrastructure, which is a primary goal and objective of this council, as well as our community, as well as our quality of life and public services programs, public safety, any projects and programs that are in progress, and then any new programs that may be created as a result of legislative mandates from the state and/or federal government. This is just a slide that shows you and demonstrates to you what the current goals are for the city council from fiscal year 17 to 18. Our city council will be getting together at the end of this month to establish goals and objectives for the upcoming fiscal year 2018-2019. This is a slide that just gives you an overview based on those funds that we just talked about, of what their primary revenue sources are for each of those. And our general fund, that comes from your property taxes, those are sales tax, which makes up the majority of revenue in your general government. And your hotel motel tax fund, that is generated from a state occupancy tax of 7% that is related back to the city of Lancaster if you utilize one of the hotels that are within our community. E911 fund, you'll notice if you have a landline on your bill, there is an E911 service fee. You also will see that be on your wireless bill. That goes in, and those funds must be utilized to offset the cost of the maintenance and the infrastructure of the equipment in our emergency communications center. And I just explained that in the economic development corporation, how the sales tax works, as well as the recreational development corporation. However, also to additional revenues for the recreational development corporation, when we offer programs and services, we do charge a modest fee to help offset the total cost of those services, and that goes back into the operations for that department. We'll look at our sanitation fund, which is how we provide solid, way services to the community and how that's generated. We'll also talk a little bit about our water and our wastewater fund, our stormwater fund, as well as airport and off. This next slide, we will show you, shows you the certified property values. By July 25th of every year, the Dallas Central appraisal districts remits to the city the certified assessed values of all the properties within the city of Lancaster. For 2018, you will note that we received our certified values at a little over $2.5 billion, which is about a 14% increase over the previous year. You can see how, since 2008, within the last 10 years, the fluctuations that have taken place within our operational revenues and the certified values that come into the city, and the impact that that has on our ability to deliver services. This is a breakdown of Hubble's property taxes look. When we receive our certified values, residential properties are appraised, as well as commercial properties. Commercial properties have two components, the business personal property piece, as well as the real personal property piece. And the real property makes up the commercial side of about 29.5%, and the business personal equates to about 18.6%. So the equipment that is in a number of these facilities that you see around the community, in addition to the building itself, they actually create and generate revenue for the city to be able to provide those services to our community. This is a breakdown between the previous year and the last year to demonstrate how we are continuing to see growth in our community with the real prices on the residential side, as well as the new developments in the residential. Year-to-date, the city has a little over 158 single-family residential permits that have come in. And we're estimating that we will receive about 175 new single-family residential dwelling units in the next fiscal year. So those are developments that are in progress. A lot of infield lots, as well as we anticipate that there will be establishment of new residential subdivisions coming online as well. With the city council's objective to shift our tax burden to make sure that the commercial is covering the cost of those services, we also have the increase in our commercial value. The largest portion of our increase for this year was new construction that came online, as well as some of the reappraisal of the commercial properties and the increase in our business personal property. This is just a bar graph of the pie chart from the previous slide that demonstrates to you how the commercial side has continued to increase over the years and how we continue to work to attract quality businesses to the community to offset the overall operating cost of providing services and quality services in our community. This is a comparison chart. The city has a list of comparable cities that we compare ourselves to. These comparable cities are identified because their base is similar in size to the city of Lancaster. They're similar in the business makeup, the demographic makeup, as well as other key component factors. And you will note that our property tax rate is remaining the same, or we're proposing that it remain the same, at .8675 cents for every $100 of assessed valuation. The city of Lancaster has maintained this existing tax rate for the last eight years. This will be the ninth year, should the council propose to do that. And that has been what the tax rate has been, and we're proposing to continue that, continue into the future. How that breaks out is .8675 was the total, with .6012 cents of every $100 going to of assessed valuation, going for maintenance and operations, and .2663 cents going for your debt, to pay your debt. And our rollback rate, we will look from this grid, well beneath our rollback rate, which is .90 cents for every $100 of assessed valuation. How that looks in comparison, when you start looking at cities in comparison. Your tax rate is a direct correlation of the total values in the community. So we just demonstrated that we are a little over $2.5 billion, and our tax rate is .8675 cents for every $100 of assessed valuation. When you look at this slide, you can see, while the tax rate for some of those comparable cities might be a lower rate, their values far exceed the city of Lancaster. And you can notice in this chart that we're still in the bottom third in terms of values. So the objective is to continue to grow the value of our community, growing that utilizing commercial and industrial development and growth, so that we can continue to offset, because the cost of service delivery is on the residential side, and commercial does not generate the same service needs as a residential. So our council has a very large focus and emphasis on making sure that we're attracting quality businesses to our community to continue to grow our economy. This shows you what the average home value is. And the average home value in our community is made up of two parts. You will note, when you receive your tax bill, that you have a market value of what your home is estimated to be, and then what your home, the value that your home is taxed at. And on the taxable value of our community, it's been a mixed bag, because we were, in 2014, our average taxable value was a little over $76,000. And you will note that this year, our taxable value has increased, and that is a positive thing for us, because that means the value and the quality of our subdivisions and our residential dwellings is on the increase, which is a positive thing for the community, as well as for the homeowner. And that is a good thing for the community as it breaks out. What this next slide shows you is how those taxes are paid. And a lot know, when you receive your tax bill, most residents think all of those dollars are coming into the city of Lancaster. But to the contrary of that, based on the average taxable value for 2018 of $116,253, you will note here that the largest portion of that goes to the independent school district, with a little over 50.26% going to the school district. And when you look at that and break it out, that equates to about $1,700 for the average home. Only 28% of that goes to the city, that equates out to about $1,000 for going. And the remaining portion of their tax bill goes to Dallas County at 8.26%, as well as the hospital district and the Dallas County Community College District. We like to try to make it relevant, so that it means something. And so when you look at, based on our average taxable value of a little over $116,253, how that equates out on a monthly basis. And what we do is, we've been comparing that to digital television. The average digital cable bill is about $100 per month. And that is just the basic cable, but that does not include any of the premium channels or the additional services or boxes that may have attached to that. But it equates out to about $100.62, based on the average tax bill of a Lancaster resident. Per month, the average Lancaster resident pays back to the city $84.04 per month for the delivery of your key primary services, which you will note that is $24,365 for police protection, fire protection, as well as emergency medical, in addition to that emergency communications at a 24-hour basis. The remaining includes your street maintenance, lighting, parks, animal co-compliance, as well as our litter control. And this looks at it, breaking it down even further, to look at what that costs per day. And I'm not a coffee drinker per se, but my staff does. And so when we make coffee runs to go to Starbucks, I do know that a grande cup of coffee, just a basic cup, is well over $2.80 for just a basic cup of coffee. But for a daily rate of your tax, your quality services, it's $2.80 per day that the average resident in our community is paying for the delivery of those services. So we like to try to demonstrate that it is a very economical way that the city is maintaining a rate that allows for quality service delivery within a reasonable and affordable rate. Sales tax makes up the second-largest percentage of revenue for our general government. This is a look at the sales tax projections from 2012 through 2018. We're estimating that we will end the year with a double-digit increase, a little over 14.8% to end this year. And we're projecting that we'll have between a 9% and a 10% increase up in the upcoming fiscal year. So as development continues to occur, with some of the new projects that will be coming online, such as Wayfair, that will be coming online, and other developments, they will contribute to our sales tax, which will contribute overall to the development and quality of life available in our community. Let's take a deeper dive into the general fund and those services. This just shows you a recap of the revenue sources, as well as the primary expenditures in that fund. This chart breaks down and shows you what that looks like in terms of how those revenues are broken out. And again, 53% comes from property taxes, with a little over 23% coming from sales tax. Followed by the most largest would be your franchise fees, as well as your transfers for intergovernmental service delivery. When we start talking about this and what that means, development is a key component, as I said. It is a key driver and a key goal and objective for our city council. And as we continue to seek to strive to attract quality development, our economic development department is key in that objective. This is how it breaks out in terms of the service delivery, when you look at that $2.80 per day. 58.3 cents of that goes to the provision of public safety in our community, which is a primary need and concern. Having a safe and feeling safe in the community is an objective that this council and the community desires to continue. The remaining 30%, or the next largest percentage is your 30%, which is your general government, which includes co-compliance, animal services, and your parks inside your community services, and then public works makes up the remaining 2.2%. Our city council has indicated that one of the primary things is to make sure we're investing in our values. And our values are those six things that we talked about, being a financially sound city government, making sure we have sound infrastructure, making sure that we're attracting the right type of development, and we're investing in our people. And so, under the professionally committed workforce, our city council has been striving to make sure we continue to attract and retain quality employees for the delivery of services. This budget year, we're proposing a 3% salary increase for all employees, inclusive of our public safety, civil service employees, as well as part-time. We've looked at our census demographics, and we recognize with a growing demographic that is speaking a second language as their primary language, that is important that we have the ability to communicate. And so we're proposing a bilingual or language pay. It will require employees to take a third-party test, and we will compensate them based on their ability to speak the language, be able to read, speak, and write the language. And those are the options that we're proposing for consideration. We've been, last year, the city council approved a recruitment incentive to make sure we could attract and recruit high-quality public safety officials. Maybe those that are already certified, because it takes a less amount of time to get them ready to be on the street. And so we're proposing to continue that public safety incentive, so that we can continue to recruit and fill our vacant positions before we get into any type of situation. And this is a look at that. We currently have authorized 63 officers. We only have three vacancies. We just had a civil service test this past weekend, and we handed out a large number of background packets and believe that we will be able to fill those three vacancies with this last test that just took place on Saturday. We are proposing in the upcoming fiscal year that city council consider adding three additional police officers. In our fire department, we have 62 authorized firefighters. We currently have no vacancies. And we're proposing that we add three additional firefighters, and we add two additional fire captains, one on the fire suppression side and one on the prevention side. And the prevention side happens to be the fire marshal side, where we do inspections, and where we make sure that plans are reviewed, and we can continue to move items through the development process. Sound infrastructure is key. We hear, we recognize, that improving our roadways and improving our streets is a number-one concern that we need to address. And the city is proposing this year, we're increasing our operation maintenance budget this year to $300,000 in the general fund operating budget. We're in the process of updating our pavement management system. And updating of that system means that we will actually travel all 215 lane miles of roadway in the community, and we will assess those roadways, those that have been repaired, those new streets, those streets that are older, and make sure that where they are on the rating system, so that if anything has changed in terms of the condition of those roadways, that the priority changes, so that we are addressing those more timely. We're also proposing that we continue our sidewalk replacement program. The maintenance of sidewalks in front of each residential subdivision is the responsibility of the homeowner. And we recognize that in some of our older communities, those sidewalks over time, with the soils in our state have shifted. We have a program where we will work, if it's an actual homeowner, we will match that 50/50 in working with the homeowner to repair the sidewalk in front of that property. And we're proposing to continue that program. We work, and partnerships are key to the city. Currently, we have three roadway projects approved through Dallas County for the Community Development Grant Program. We will be making repairs to Wild Street, from Trippery Street to Franklin Street. We'll be making repairs to Lindenwood, from Dewberry to John. And we will be making repairs on Laurel Street, from Dallas Avenue to Elm. And these are streets that are going to be repaired by Dallas County. And the city of Lancaster is not having to pick up the cost for the labor, as well as the cost of the materials to make those repairs. In 2007, the voters of our community approved $37.5 million for street bonds. The city council set when those bonds were issued, or approved, rather, that they would not be issued, where it would have an adverse impact on the property tax rate. We had a little over $9.5 million remaining of those street bonds to be issued. And because we've been diligent in managing the expenditures and managing the revenues authorized to the city this year, we will be able to issue the remaining $9.5 million. And with those, we will be able to finish projects. The Daniel Bell Road project, which is, we'll be able to finish that project. We'll be able to begin Daniel, One Green Road, from I-35 to Houston School Road. We'll be completing the Pleasant Run Road project. The city council just approved the first phase of Pleasant Run, which will start at Interstate 35, and it will go to Houston School Road. Construction is scheduled to begin September 4th. With issuing of the remaining bonds, we will be able to do the second and third phases of Pleasant Run Road. We'll pick up at Houston School Road and go to Blue Grove. And then the third phase will be picking up at Blue Grove and going to Dallas Avenue. We will be able to continue that project with the remaining issuance of these bonds. The remaining two projects that were identified through the 2007 bond was Dallas Avenue, doing Streetscape, as well as Belt Line Road with some Streetscape, and Houston School Road with Streetscape projects. We also, as a part of that $9.5 million, there were dollars set aside for asphalt roadway repair, and they were not designated. So based on the outcome of the pavement management program and condition of streets, we will be repairing those streets in a priority based on the construction status of those roadways. And this is just a highlight of those streets that we just talked about. One of the roadways that we do recognize is on that list that's in need, that's an asphalt roadway, is Bear Creek Road. And that will be kind of at the top of the list to begin with, those undesignated street funds that are remaining in the $9.5 million for the bond project. In addition to that, the sanitation fund. Sanitation fund, as we discussed, is made up of revenues collected and derived from service provision. That goes right back into the operation of that fund. But within the sanitation fund, because we recognize those heavy trucks travel our roadways, we utilize those funds to repair. There is funds set aside for repair of our street maintenance, as well as some of the programs, such as our quarterly trash shops and our recycling programs. And this year, with the sanitation rates, you will note that sanitation rate has remained the same. We went to a new contractor in 2016, and we maintained those residential rates. And the council did so, because even though the rate to that contractor was lower than our current rate, any rate increases can be absorbed and not have to be passed on to our residents as a result of that. And we have been able, as you know, to maintain our residential customer service rates at $60.34 per month. The hand collect, any commercial customer that has a hand collect picked up, they did receive a slight increase this year, from $17.2 up to $17.58 for their service provision. In the roadways that we're proposing to repair, is looking here. We're going to be doing Crest Street from West Main to Red Bud. We'll be looking at three alleyways for repair behind Hartford, as well as our Katy Lane and Rookers through our sanitation fund. And we have approximately $250,000 that we're receiving those franchise fees that will allow us to make those roadway repairs. Again, economic development helps us generate new business, which helps create and provide provision of the services in our community. And as we noted, that is made up from those sales tax provisions. Within the economic development corporation, we look at administration, marketing, and incentives. And so the largest portion of what we'll be paying back are incentives. Incentives are that necessary to attract and recruit and retain the businesses that are in our community. So we will continue to implement that, and the council has adopted policy that they do follow as it relates to that. When we look at our healthy, safe, and engaged community, a number of the things that we're doing to try to work to improve that. Animal services is key. Last fiscal year, the council recognized that there was a lot of people starting around the North Texas region, as well as right here in our community, related to after-hours and weekend calls, as it relates to loose animals, loose dogs. And so we implemented an on-call, part-time animal control officer that would be available to answer in the evenings and weekends. We're continuing that program. We have a partnership with the city of Hutchins, where they actually utilize our animal control and our animal services center. And they pay the city for the utilization of that, and that helps us with costs. The city council also implemented a microchip, a mandatory microchip program. And so we host three events per year in various areas of the city, where we have identified, we have loose, our roaming dogs, problems in those neighborhoods. And we're proposing to continue that program as well. When you look at our recreational center, Quality of Life and Cultural Services, there are a number of programs and services that are offered within our organization. For youth, we focus highly on youth programs and services. We have a youth advisory commission. Those are the students that are in our high school that partner with the recreational center to look at what are the concerns and needs of the youth, and how do we continue to move those forward and do some interesting things. Our library is a part of the recreational development corporation. Through a grant, we were able to obtain a mobile library. The mobile library is able to travel around the community. Particularly, we partnered with the Lancaster Independent School District, George Washington Carver Sixth Grade Center. That our mobile library goes to the sixth grade center, because there's not a library actually in the school. So the students have access to the library through our mobile trailer and through that mobile library. And we had over 418 visits last year, and we believe that that will continue as we go forward. Technology is improving and changing the way we utilize our library. And our library is being very ahead of the curve in terms of ebooks and audiobooks and other media that is available. And so we have funds set aside to make sure we can continue to make those available to the residents of our community. Our senior life center is another key program. And within the senior life center, that's available for citizens in our community that are 50 or older. And they have the ability to be picked up and go to, and I don't say seniors, they're mature adults that are 50 or older. The closer I get to 50, that is mature adults. And they have the opportunity to, we have a bus that will actually go to your home, pick you up, bring you to the center. And they have the opportunity to engage with other mature adults in lots of activities, inclusive of field trips, a number of programs for health, wellness, as well as being engaged. Because it's right here in the complex of community park, next to our recreational center, right across from our high school, there are a number of opportunities. When school is in session with the cosmetology school right next door, our seniors take field trips, and they have the opportunity to get their hair done, get manicures, get pedicures, get beautified. They also have a number of celebrations, holiday celebrations, as well as honorary celebrations, such as Veterans Day and others, that the seniors actively participate in, as you can see from some of the photos here. We are proposing that we have, that is operated by one full-time employee, the bus driver, and a part-timer. This budget proposes that that part-timer increase to a full-timer, because the number of participants in our senior life center has grown. And we have actively, on a daily basis, upwards of 75 to 80 participants that attend on a daily basis. And we anticipate that that will continue to grow as time moves on. The next would be our stormwater fund. The stormwater fund is mandated, because there is, from the Environmental Protection Agency of the federal government, they issue a mandate that goes down to the state government. The state administers it through the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. And they said that cities were required to ensure that the runoff is not such that it has an adverse impact to create or the potential for contamination of our groundwater or flooding. And so with the stormwater fund, we look at the revenue sources for that, and it comes from that fee that is mandated by the government. At our residential customers, they pay $7.97 per month. Our commercial customers pay based on the imperious suffers. And what this allows us to do is to shed light and provide illumination to making sure what you do, you are aware that it goes into the drains. So there are a number of education programs that we do, as well as it's how we do creek and drainage maintenance in the public rightsway around our overpasses and our bridges. It's also how we address litter in the rightsway that could go into those drainages, It's also how we address litter in the rightsway that could go into those drainages, as well as the trimming back the debris, et cetera, around that. So that is the largest portion of what takes place in our stormwater fund and how those funds are actually utilized. In addition to sound infrastructure, we have the Lancaster Regional Airport, which is a key driver for our community. Not many communities, suburban communities, have an airport. And the City of Lancaster does have the Lancaster Regional Airport. And we have at the airport a little over a hundred hangars. They remain, we are always around ninety-eight percent occupied, and we typically maintain a weightless, so as soon as someone moves out, someone else moves in. And that is very beneficial to the city. We have a great partnership with the Texas Department of Transportation and through their aviation division, we're in the process of building and constructing a new terminal building. That new terminal building is funded ninety percent by the state of Texas, and the city's portion was only ten percent. At the terminal building, we have an airport cafe. And so we invite you to always go out, take a look. It's not like, you know, at some point, when I was a child, you could go to the larger airports and watch planes take off and land. Because of security reasons, you don't have that availability. But at the Lancaster Regional Airport, you can go out, have a meal, sit out on the patio and watch those planes take off land and enjoy. Coming up on September first, we will have the Lancaster Fly-In, which is a large event at the airport, where we have a number of aircraft from all over the region, the state and even the country that fly in to the airport. There is a small airshow, and you have the opportunity to engage with pilots toward the airport, take a look at a lot of those planes. So we encourage you to visit the exhibit here and engage with our airport manager. Continue Golf Course is an asset to the Lancaster community. We have the Continue Golf Course. The golf course was previously managed by a different company. The city brought in the regional, the golf course back under city operations, and we hired a management company to come on and work with the city and partner with the city. Touchstone Golf came on board with the city of Lancaster at the first part of the year. They've been managing the course for us. And all the equipment, all the services at the golf course, I apologize, are now property totally, wholly owned by the city. And so we don't have someone else manage it, and when they decide that the management contract no longer works, all of that goes away. It is now all property of the city. And we are excited about the number of programs and services that are available at the golf course. We have the cafe that is now open at the golf course, so there's food and beverage service. You also have the ability when you're out with the course, we have new carts that are going to be implemented. We're going from gas carts to electric carts, which is a key driver. We have the beverage cart that is now available on the course as well. And we recognize that we have a course that is a very challenging course that has won awards for its ability to be a challenging course, but it's also very affordable. And so we encourage you to visit with our staff here from Touchstone Golf that is currently managing the golf course for the city. Our water and wastewater fund. We recognize that water utilities are very important to our residents, they're also very important to the city. And we look here at our revenue sources. And again, this is one of those proprietary funds, so that the revenues that are generated from this fund go back into the operations of the fund. And in there, we have our water administration, utility billing, operations of the water system, metering, wastewater operations, as well as our cost for those services. Each year, we do a utility rate study. That study is a five-year plan, and every five years, we update that plan. And at this time, at the, when we have our plan review, there is no recommended increase in our rates for water. The City of Lancaster has also entered into agreement with the City of Wilmer, and we actually will begin selling water to Wilmer because of our capacity and ability, and the City of Wilmer does not have a wholesale agreement with a water provider. So the City of Lancaster will service that water provider, and they will pay a fee to the city in addition to the administration fee that is associated with the sale of that water. On the wastewater side, the wastewater fund was not actually performing at the level that it is needed to perform at to make sure that it can meet the, maintain the needs of the capital needs and costs, as well as the costs associated with the Trinity River Authority who treats our wastewater. However, based on the health of the water and wastewater fund, staff is recommending that council maintain the existing rates. Because we have performed so well on the water side, we believe that the fund is healthy enough, and working with our consultants over the long term, or at least in the immediate short term, that we are able to maintain those rates without passing on the increase based on the costs and the needs of that program. We're in the process of updating our water wastewater master plan, which helps us identify what are the capital needs and how we can continue to invest in making sure that we have safe and good infrastructure for the time to come. And as I stated, we're proposing that we maintain the existing rates as they are. And our rates are here on the screen. You will note that the minimum bill and the base bill for our water service is twenty dollars and ninety cents per month. And then it's based on your use per gallons. So we have conservation rates that's mandated by the state of Texas. And if you use less than fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine gallons, it's two dollars and sixty-seven cents, two dollars and sixty-seven cents for every thousand gallons. And then it goes up, it's on a tiered basis. The average single-family resident uses less than fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine gallons. On the sanitary sewer side, we're maintaining, we're proposing to maintain our base rate, minimum bill fifteen dollars and four cents, and then at seven dollars and seventy-three cents per thousand gallons. The largest portion of any utility bill is the sanitary sewer side. The City of Lancaster does do winter averaging. The purpose and intent of winter averaging is because nationally and historically across the country, residents tend to use less water during those winter months. And so we take those three winter months, you look at your December, January, and February usage, and you take that and you average that, and that becomes your winter average. You pay the lower of your actual water consumption for the month for your winter average. Our residents are always paying the lower of the two. So in summer months, when we tend to use more water, we don't pay on the actual use of the water for the month, we pay on our winter average. So every month, when you look at your bill, you have to look at what your usage was for the month, and then look up your winter average, and you pay the lesser of those two. We're proposing to maintain that rate. We were proposing to maintain our senior citizens discount, which on the water side is a dollar ninety-four cents per month discount, and wastewater is a dollar seventy-six cents per month. You have to be age sixty-two, the utility bill must be in your name to be eligible for that discount. The city council has requested that we look at how do we increase the senior citizen discount and the impact that that will have. And so that may be changing as we go through this process. And so we are in the process of evaluating that, and we'll be coming back to our city council as a part of this process to look at how do we increase the discount for our seniors. And that is for the residents, again, that are sixty-two or older, and they can come in and request that discount by producing their identification and demonstrating that. This looks at the comparison of the City of Lancaster utility bills and comparison for the region just based on water and sewer. And you can see where we fall in terms of power of the one community. And our utility rate study is what produced these figures. And you can see there on the chart where the City of Lancaster falls, based on the average resident, single-family residential customer uses about five thousand dollars of water per month. And so at that, the average customer will pay a little over eighty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents, and that's just the water wastewater side of the bill. And remember, your utility bill also includes your sanitation or your trash, as well as the stormwater fee. The programs that we're proposing to do with the water and wastewater fund this year, we began a five-year replacement program on our water meters. FY eighteen, this current year, we will have completed two thousand and twenty. Next year, by year end, we will have completed all of the meters that replace the additional eight hundred. And that will allow us to have completed every place, every register on a meter at any residential dwelling in the City of Lancaster. We have five-year battery lives in our meters. We replace those with a ten-year battery life meter. So it allows us to have a longer term between looking at, it allows us to maintain the system a lot more efficiently. We're also proposing as a part of this program, we are going to do a maintenance and replacement program on our hydrant system. We have over one thousand five hundred and sixty-two fire hydrants in our city. They're all GIIS located, we know exactly where they are. And with this program, we're going to be actually doing physical testing on those, as well as maintenance and repairs, such as painting those, and if they've been ship damaged, et cetera, this program will bring all of those up. And we'll be able to begin more of a strategic replacement program instead of just replacing it as it breaks. In addition to that, we will be cleaning and repainting the water tower, the above-ground storage tank at Jefferson, the water pump station here that's located right behind us. That will be cleaned and repainted to include the city, as well as the school district low rows. We will also be looking at the water above-ground storage tank at Fire Station Two on Ames Street, to make sure we have the opportunity to clean and paint and upgrade that one as well. In addition to that, these are water projects that we'll be doing for the year, or we're proposing as a part of this budget, that we will be changing out and replacing lines on West Ridge from Ray to Melrose, on Melrose from Francis to Main, and on Baskin from Henry to Bruce, we will be actually upsizing that main line from a two-inch line to a six-inch line. The other lines, we will be replacing them at the size they currently are. And then on Martindale from Chiray O'Trell to Stewart. On our sewer line projects, we will be replacing the line at the Pleasant Run Little School between Ray and Oak Blump. We will be replacing the line from I-35 Service Road at Pleasant Run to Beltline. Maple Street from Ray to Alexander, and East Fifth Street from Jefferson to Dallas Avenue. Those are the water projects, the wastewater projects that we have identified for the year. And that's kind of a recap of all of the proposals and the items that we've requested the council to consider for this upcoming budget year. Our main budget schedule is that on Monday ninth, August twentieth, we will conduct the first public hearing. That public hearing will be held at the Lancaster Municipal Center, our city hall, which is located at two-eleven North Henry Street. That meeting will begin at seven P.M. Residents choosing to speak should show up, they have the opportunity to sign up before the call to order, but they also have the opportunity to simply speak during the public hearing portion of the meeting as it relates to the budget and the tax rate, to share their concerns with city council. The second public hearing will be conducted on Monday, August twenty-seventh, also beginning at seven P.M. at Lancaster Municipal Center, which is two-eleven North Henry Street, and you have the same opportunity at that meeting. City council will ideally consider adoption and approval of the fiscal year twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget at their September tenth, two thousand and eighteen council meeting. And that actually concludes the presentation portion of this.
Hello, I'm DeLaGuerre Walker, Director of the Emergency Communications and Emergency Management Department with the City of Lancaster. Our emergency communications department handles nine-one-one calls for service and non-emergency calls for service for the City of Lancaster. We hire dedicated professional operators to handle your calls to make sure that they get the most accurate and fastest response to our citizens. They also dispatch services for police, fire, and EMS. I also oversee the emergency management department, which handles the twenty outdoor warning sirens for the city. We are also in charge of educating the public in reference to emergency preparedness.
My name is Rusty Lemley. I represent the members of the LEAP program. The LEAP program is Eyes and Ears program that are under the umbrella of code enforcement. And we're a group of volunteers that go out into the city and help with code compliance and take pictures and document high grass, water, high grass, weed, bulk trash, abandoned signs, fence maintenance, inoperable vehicles, and vehicles that are on unimproved surfaces.
My name is Chip Demmon. I'm with the City of Lancaster Code Compliance Department. I'm the Senior Co-Compliance Officer. I have supervised six officers in my unit. And this is just a basic description of what we do. We handle the high grass and weeds, abandoned and junk vehicles. We deal with the bests around your neighborhood in an effort to try to improve the quality of life. I work under the supervision of Cadiz Cabona, the Assistant City Manager. And as you can see on some of these display photos, we've got bandit sand at the bottom, bottom right. That's completely and totally forbidden in the City of Lancaster. Anytime we see them, we pull them up. That can rate a ticket and fine in court. Over here to your left-hand side is going to be a fence that hasn't been properly maintained. That's also covered under city code. We handle the civil end of enforcement for the City of Lancaster. We have the ability to write citations and carry people to court. We generally will handle, I think we've handled roughly in the neighborhood of around three hundred illegal dumping sites within the City of Lancaster this year alone. So it's a major problem. More than likely, the fence violations, the vehicle violations, parking in the grass is also a big problem in the City of Lancaster. It deters from the attractiveness of the city. As you can see, we're working very hard to make the City of Lancaster a beautiful place and a shining star in northeast Texas. We're building inspections. We verify compliance with building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, energy codes, and we also check for zoning compliance as well. So what we do is we verify compliance with those things through plan review upfront before the permits issue. And then we go out into the field and do inspections to verify that those electrical installations, structural installations, plumbing, energy are all in compliance with building codes that have been adopted by the city council. The second phase of our program is rental property inspections. And we do that in three different areas. We do single-family and duplex. Every time that the tenant changes, we do an inspection. And then at least annually, we do an inspection on all apartments in all hotels and motels.
Hi, I'm Sharon Youngman. I'm the Assistant Finance Director for the City of Lancaster. We have five members in our finance department. Baron Salz is the Finance Director. We have Chief Accountant Daryl Montgomery, an accountant Tori Strawn, and our accounts payable clerk is Sarah Purvey. We do a multiple variety of operations. We do recording deposits, bank reconciliations, investment management, quarterly financial statements, accounts payable. We do capital asset management, bond accounting, quarterly investment reports, financial transparency, grant management, and audit preparation. The finance department is very important to the city. We are in charge of your, the finances for the people of Lancaster, and we take great pride in taking responsibility for your finances. Thank you.
Hi, I'm James Andrews, and I'm a customer service representative for the Utility Billing Department with the City of Lancaster. And what we do is we process utility payments. We also create service work orders for residential and commercial addresses for meter issues or, you know, you need somebody to look at your water meter to make sure it's working properly. We also create new accounts, both commercial and residential. We also provide excellent customer service. I hope you guys come down and see us sometime. If you need to process your utility payments, we also do that as well. Thank you.
My name is Elton Dixon. I'm the Purchase Manager for the City of Lancaster. Here you see what the purchasing department entails. We do bids, RFPs, RFQs. Anything over three thousand, you have to get three quotes. Anything over fifty thousand have to be brought to city council. We also, we also do all the contracts for the city, every contract that goes out for any vendor or anyone that does business with us, we are over that. We also register vendors. You can register at our website, www.lancaster-tx.com. Go to the Work tab and click on Bid Opportunities. If you need anything, you can always call me. Our number is nine-seven-two-two-one-eight-one-three-two-nine. Thank you for being a part of us.
Hi, I'm Kellen Benbrook. I'm the Airport Manager for Lancaster Regional Airport. We service all forms of aircraft, jets, helicopters, pistons. We do full-service fuel for both one-hundred Loet and Jet A. And we also have self-serve twenty-four-seven. We also do typical airport maintenance, airfield lighting, pavement repair. And our goal is customer service for every pilot that comes in.
Hi, my name is Bruce Taylor. I'm here with the City of Lancaster Human Resource Department. We handle all the issues for human resources, for employees and for job hiring. So if you're looking for a job position, go to our city's website, www.lancaster-tx.com. Click on Employment Opportunities, check out the job openings we have. We also help our employees with benefits as far as healthcare, dental. We also help out with any internal issues for mediation purposes. And we also help out with opportunities that the city can provide for the employees as far as discounts and continued educations. So if you want to join the team, check out the City of Lancaster website, once again,
Hello, this is Battalion, I'm Battalion Chief Fighter.
Hello, this is Battalion, I'm Battalion Chief Hunter, just representing the Lancaster Fire Department, just going to tell you a little bit about what we do. The Fire Department, we also have ambulance service that we run. Seventy-five percent of our services are ambulance-related. We have MICUs which have paramedics on them. We have capabilities of doing pretty much anything you can do in an emergency room, we can do in the back of an ambulance. We also provide fire services protection for the city. We have three engines in the city that we provide fire protection with. We also do fire prevention, which we have, actually have people out on right now doing public education in some of the schools.
Hi, I'm DeeDee Hillary, M S Chief for the Lancaster Fire Department. Been with the department for over nineteen years now. EMS is Emergency Medical Services, and we have about fifty-five paramedics, as well as about nine EMTs in this system. We run about seventy-five percent of calls are medical-related, and we have, we do a lot of the training, and some of the reasons we stay on scene so long are because we can do everything the hospital can do in the first fifteen minutes that we're there. So we like to try to stay there and try to help the person instead of risking everybody's safety and driving down the road while doing a lot of the work.
Hi, my name is Nate Deez, I'm the City Fire Marshal. My job is to make sure that our citizens are safe, as well as all employees that work within our city limits. So I go through and we do citywide inspections through all businesses in the city. I'm also part of the development team to guide any developers that want to come into our city and let them know what they need to do as far as fire safety. And also, I am also in charge of the Fire Prevention Program, where we go out and teach all the children, fire prevention, as well as the public. And also, we also go out and do all the investigations on all fire, all fire scenes throughout the city. We also work in conjunction with the Fire Department and help train the guys in fire prevention and how to safely conduct themselves inside all the buildings in the city.
Hey, my name is Rob Franklin. I'm the Battalion Chief of Training for our Fire Department, and excited to talk to you a little bit about the things that we have planned for next year for our budget. First and foremost, it's training our members so we can better serve our community. We know that a staff that has an increase in their education, an increase in their abilities, an increase in their skills and knowledge, it only has the ability to share that amongst the organization and carry that knowledge, skills, and abilities back out to the community. So when the bell goes off, we're ready to go and do our jobs. The other part about training that we really love is setting up community events and setting up community education. Just like with the Fire Marshal's Office, it's really important for us to get all of the information about the Fire Department out, how we can better serve, and how our citizens can really even better take care of themselves. And I really would like to make a plug for the Public Safety Academy, where it's not only the Fire Department, but also the Police Department that our citizens get to participate in. A lot of hands-on experience, a little bit of time in the classroom, but really understanding what goes on in public safety, and then the things that we can equip our citizens with to have better knowledge about what we do and how we care for our citizens.
My name's Charlie Miller, I'm the Assistant Chief of Police for the Lancaster Police Department. And I show you today some of the greatest things that we have that's provided by you, the citizen. Although we have many tools and uniforms and all the things that you would come to know about the Lancaster Police Department, the tools that we use, the greatest thing that's provided by the city is the training. Your officers are the best-trained officers in the state of Texas, and we pride ourselves in doing things the right way. So we want to thank you for your continued support and your prayers.
My name is Sean Nguyen. I'm the City Engineer for the City of Lancaster, and I just want to give a brief overview. The Engineering Department is in charge of making sure, you know, we work on capital improvement projects like roadway, bridges, and other parts of the city. We also work on private developments like the new warehouses, new commercial properties and everything else. And what we do is, we make sure that the improvements that new developments have follow our standards and that we're worried about public safety. So that's one thing we're involved in. Just to kind of summarize, we're involved in private development and also public infrastructure. Hi, I'd like to talk about two projects. First one being the Beltline Road and a Blue Grove Road. Basically what we're doing is asphalt reconstruction. We're taking out the old asphalt on Beltline Road from Blue Grove, which is near that Walmart, to Main Street. And the other one, Blue Grove, is from Beltline to, Beltline to Main Street also. So on that project, we're starting right now. We should be finishing up in the next six or seven weeks. So the other project is the Pleasant Run Road project. That's basically from I thirty-five to Houston School Road, and what we're doing is, we're cutting out sections of asphalt, of concrete pavement that's defective, and taking out the subways and replacing it with new concrete. So by the time we finish, Pleasant Run Road should be very smooth, and it should, it should have all the, you know, defective concrete should be replaced. And that project is going to probably take place after Memorial, Labor Day, September fourth, and it'll probably take like two, three months.
So this is the Planning Division, my name is Emma. So planning basically ensures that development is organized, we ensure that there's safety in all types of projects that comes into the city. We review site plans, landscape plans, elevation plans. We also look at cases that come into the historic districts. We also review plots, that's where people want to make legal logs and records. And we just make sure that zoning districts that are not supposed to be next to each other where it's going to create a hazard, they're not side-by-side, and if they are, there's a grid screening. So planning basically works to ensure that there's functionality and organization in the city.
Hi, my name is Shane Shepherd. I'm the Economic Development Director for the City of Lancaster. And in economic development, what we do, we try to recruit businesses, industries, retail, any sort of development to come into town. Sometimes we offer incentives if we need to, if not, we might help them through some of the processes that the city has, direct them to the correct department. And so in economic development, we make sure that we retain the businesses and that we bring in new businesses.
Hi, I'm Andrew Waits. I'm over water wastewater, streets and stormwater metering. We do all your, we do all the maintenance of the streets, all your potholes and repairs. We've got a lot of projects coming up in the future. We have Pleasant Run, Bear Creek, Winter Green Road, and several other water line projects forthcoming, so it's going to be exciting here.
Shawn Johnson, Managing Director of Party of Life and Cultural Services. We have with us our Assistant Director, Mr. Mike Rasko, who helps oversee Parks and Recreation Services. We have Mr. Kevin Wiley, who is our Parks Maintenance Manager, who oversees the maintenance of our parks and athletic fields, our adoption stock programs. We also have the gentleman to the far left, who is John Melton, our Library Manager, oversees our library operation. And then we say the best of last, our Senior Sales Supervisor, Ms. Theodore Walker, who does our standing job of providing senior services for all of our citizens sixty and above. We're just excited to be able to serve the City of Lancaster and look forward to many more years to come as the tax base grows, and we can provide more facilities, more services, and we are proud to be a part of the shining star of Texas.
My name is Jermaine Sepp, Director of Equipment and Facilities. We, the Department of Equipment and Facilities, we prepare and we do, we buy all the purchasing of all equipment for the city, including first responders, and also service all the buildings. There are sixteen buildings, approximately two-hundred-and-ten square, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand square footage through the city that we maintain, and we also currently are housed at one of the newest facilities in the city, which is the Fleet Magnus Building, which is six-thirty-one East Third Street, which was completed in construction of July of two thousand and seventeen. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kevin Herd. I'm the General Manager at Country View Golf Course. Come out and visit us. What we offer is multiple, different opportunities for memberships, you know, for players' card, Twilight Members, annual and monthly passes. We have a newly renovated bar and grill, full menu bar, TVs in every spot that you can actually have every view that you can have. We have full eighteen holes. You know, you can book your tournament, you can book events. We have an event coming up, the Country View Scramble, that's open to the public. We also do have other memberships as far as MGA, WGA, and all that takes is forty dollars a year, and what that does is that we're able to hold your handicap, establish it, and manage it for you. So visit us, or call the golf shop, nine-seven-two-two-two-seven-zero-nine-nine-five, and look forward to having you there.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Crowe. I'm the Community Programs Coordinator for the City of Lancaster. I'm a part of the City Managers Office and the Community Relations Division, and also the Public Relations Division. And in our office, we have a variety of programs going on. Of course, we have our trophy from our It's Time Texas Community Challenge. We want to thank all of our community members for getting involved, for taking their healthy selfies and committing to our healthier lifestyle. You all came together and helped us as a community beat all of the other cities in Texas for the healthiest city in our category. So we want to thank our community members for that, and then also encourage you to continue to make those healthy habits. And we also have a variety of different programs. In October, we have coming up our National Night Out Celebration. We'll be right across the street at our Public Safety Building, that's one-hundred Craig Shaw Memorial Parkway, and that will be from six to eight P M., where we'll be celebrating our community partnerships with our Police Department and then also our community. So we encourage people to come out for that as well. We do a host of community programs in the City Managers Office. We do have our Lancaster Connection that comes out quarterly. We have a Lancaster Live, which comes out weekly. And then we also, right now, are doing a citizen survey. That's where you can talk to us and tell us what things you would like to see in your community, and also voice your concerns about what things are going well and what things you would like to see change, because we don't only want to talk to you, we want you to talk to us as well. So together, remember, united, we make Lancaster a great place to most live, learn, work, and play. Thanks for making Lancaster the shining star of Texas.
What does the GIS stand for?
Geographic Information System. Basically, if it has a spatial location, it's in our maps. Everything, water lines, sewer lines, fire hydrants, zoning, anything.
So what's the difference between your maps and the ones that are on Google Maps?
The depth of the information we have, you can't find water lines out on Google Maps, but you have them on our maps.
Awesome, awesome. And what department are you in?
The Information Technology Department, which we do, we support all the other departments in the city. Anything to do with computers, phones, fiber optics, you name it, we support it. The website, city website, we manage that.
And it definitely is an integral part of our city operations.
We do, we keep the guys running. On a bear bowman's crew, too. How many people are you? How many people? Four and a half people.
Four and a half. We're almost three hundred employees. The best of the best here.
And like two hundred and some computers and servers.
Hi, this is Andy, City Secretary for the City of Lancaster. We coordinate board and commissions, we do them annually. Those are coming up in December, so I encourage everybody to come in and apply. We also do open records requests, those are for anybody that wants to turn in documents or look at turn documents that the city has. We make those transparent to people. We also do open meetings, work with the open meetings at any point. If we have our council together, we have four or more, it constitutes a meeting, and at that time, we are putting a meeting together.
Hi, I'm Kim. I'm with the City of Lancaster Municipal Court, I'm the Court Administrator.
Hi, I'm Robin. I'm a Deputy Court Clerk with the City of Lancaster Municipal Court.
Our Municipal Court handles all of the Class C misdemeanors for the City of Lancaster. We also do code enforcement violations, animal control, Fire Marshal, and building inspection citations. We also process warrants. We also house the Marshals Division that actually goes out and picks up people that have active warrants. We hold court in two-twenty West Main Street. We have court on Mondays and Thursdays. We have several dockets. We have plea court, we have bench trials with the judge, we also have jury trials. You may receive a summons for jury duty. It will be located at two-twenty West Main. The summons comes with all the instructions on how to fill out your jury questionnaire. We also have a city prosecutor that is with the City Attorney's Office, so she also works at the court on Mondays and Thursdays. We have warrant roundup once a year, we have open dockets once a month. We have, the warrant roundup is on a Saturday each year, the court is open on that day to help people that have warrants. We also allow people to do time payments, so if you have any questions about your citation, it's good to call the court. We also have all of the information on the city's website. We have online forms. You're able to pay your traffic ticket online. You do not need to come to the court if you use the traffic pay system for payment. So contact the court with any questions. We're open Monday through Friday, eight A M. to five P M.
And our number will be nine-seven-two-two-one-eight-one-three-three-four. You can catch us at the court from eight to five.